Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Work Session here on Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and it is four thirty P M. So we're starting the meeting, calling the meeting officially to order. Angie, would you roll call for me, please?
Here, 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 here.
Thank you. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act of the State of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. No formal vote or action will be taken at this meeting as it is a work session. I repeat, no formal vote or action will be taken at this meeting. Our only item on the agenda this afternoon is a presentation by Marcy Luth, hi, Marcy, of Almquist, Malson, Galloway, and Luth, P C, on the city of North Platte Audit for fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And Marcy, as usual, I'm just going to hand it over to you, but I'm just going to warn you, if it gets to be five twenty-five, I'll be cutting you off because we need a five-minute break for the City Council meeting. So, Marcy, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you for letting me join you via Zoom. We wanted to get this information to you guys because it is your September thirtieth year-end information. And today, unfortunately, I had meetings that did not enable you to travel out there, but we do want to have the opportunity to go through everything and make sure that you guys have an opportunity to have your questions answered. So there's a couple of things I'm going to be going through today. One is the actual bound audit report. We're going to hit some highlights on that. But you know, that's a, that's a multi-page, probably close to a hundred-page audit report. So we always try to break that down into more understandable ratios. So there's also a two-page ratio spreadsheet that you guys should have that we're going to be referring to a lot as well. To start out, I'm going to start at the bound audit report on page two, which is the audit opinion. And just to emphasize that the opinion states that you guys received an unmodified opinion for the September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four year-end. That's what your goal when you go into an audit. And so that's what those first two paragraphs there indicate. Page three does emphasize that it does not include the component unit, which is the airport door. Can you guys hear okay?
We can. We just had a little feedback here. I was just telling you to deal with it. So go ahead. You're fine.
Do you need us to do some, some checks? Or are you okay with me just talking and proceeding on?
Go ahead and proceed. We're good. We have, we have the I T expert here. He's taking care of it, so.
All right. So one of the things that we want to note on page three, there are a couple of paragraphs that I always think are good for you guys to read as you have a little bit of time. One of them talks about responsibilities of management for the financial statements, and then it goes on and talks about audit responsibilities. And I think no matter whether it's the city audit or any audit report that you're looking at, it's always important to remember those things and just look at those responsibilities. So read through that sometime when you do have a chance. At this point, I'm going to jump over to the two-page ratio spreadsheet and kind of talk through those items. What this spreadsheet represents is basically twelve kind of key ratios that we use on all of our municipals that we work with across Nebraska. The ratios compare not only to your last five years, so it gives a nice historical perspective, but we also have a peer group or recommended column. And so that recommended column may be just some rule of thumb benchmarking that we have developed over the years that we feel are good levels to achieve, or they may be averages of the peers that we're looking at. And for you guys, the peer groups that we're looking at are twelve municipals of similar size across the state of Nebraska. We've gone out to their audit reports and gathered the information to kind of compare to where you guys are. So starting out on that first line, we're looking at valuations, and you can see the city of North Platte's valuation for twenty twenty-four came in at about just shy of one point nine million dollars, or excuse me, one point nine billion dollars there. And you can see per capita, that comes out to about eighty, just shy of eighty-one thousand. So you can see your per capita valuation has increased over the last five years, but you can also see compared to the cities that were benchmarking or the peer group, that runs a little bit lighter on the per capita valuation than the average peers that we're comparing to. Item number one looks at your unrestricted net position. And here, we like to see unrestricted net position compared to total. That benchmark is usually somewhere between twenty-five to forty percent, depending on if we're talking governmental or if we're talking utility or business-type funds. And here you can see that you're close in all of those categories, and you've been pretty consistent over time. And what that means is you're close to the recommended benchmark on unrestricted net assets or net position. This simply means unrestricted is not tied up in capital assets or restricted for some outside purpose, whether that be a grant or a donor or some purpose that you have to use the funds for. The unrestricted net position gives you guys flexibility in being able to respond as new projects come up and having the equity to proceed with those things that you decide to, to follow up on. Item number two looks at your top five revenue sources for your governmental funds. And here you can see how it compares to the peers. Sales tax for you guys, you're at six ninety-three per capita. The peer group average about five twenty-six. Now, keep in mind for the last year or so, a little over a year, you guys have been at that two percent rate. And you can see that as you look back historically, you can see a lot larger sales tax this year compared to history. Your property taxes, you can see, run a bit ahead of your peer group as far as the per capita and property tax, but very conservative over the last several years. Grants is an area that can vary from year to year depending upon what you have going on in your community. We can see that swing widely. This year happened to be a year where we had larger amounts of grants revenue that came in. So you can see that's up about double from where it was the year before. State allocation, we see a lot of consistency as we look across that and very comparable to the peers. We'll look a little more at that state allocation in a minute on the next item. And then charges for services, you see a lot of consistency looking back over the last five years, increase of each year, but pretty consistent. And you guys look like you run much higher than your peers, but keep in mind, the city of North Platte has your sanitation and your trash fund included in the general, where some communities, a lot of communities will have that in the utility side of things. And so that does drive your charges for services to be higher than what we see at other municipalities. Item number three looks at your state allocation in a little more detail. And here again, if you look back over the last five years, you can see a lot of consistency and also pretty comparable to your peers. You run a bit ahead on highway allocation, but a bit below on police utilization compared to that peer group. Your governmental expenses by function show a lot of consistency back over the five years. Now here, we have to take the peer group averages a bit, not as serious, well, I would say seriously, you want to compare, but you have to remember that all communities have their priorities on where they have their dollars, what services they offer, whether they have full-time police, fire, all of those things. Of course, in cities your side, you'll have the police force, but do you have the whole fire departments in all of those communities? Do you have the same level of environment and leisure services in all of those communities? So here, I usually like to direct us back to just the last five years and looking at that consistency in expenditures over time. Item number five looks at your outstanding D O debt. Anything less than three percent says you have excellent capacity to service the debt payments that come up. You can see you guys were just shy of one percent. So you're in that excellent range of being able to service your governmental debt. On the next page, we have unassigned fund balance compared to total general fund expenditures. We like to have at least a quarter of your year's general fund expenditures available in unassigned fund balance. And you can see that you guys have some solid reserves there in that you're at about thirty-six percent. But look back over the last five years, and you can see the solid improvement in that category. And I know this has been an area that you guys have worked hard to be able to build that unassigned, so you were in much better position with the general fund and having some cash reserves in that fund. Item number seven looks at your street fund. Now, what we like to see is keeping that out of a local twelve months' worth of street cap, and that simply tells us that you're using your restricted state dollars and rolling them back into street projects. You can see you're at about four point six months, and that tells us you are using those dollars, you're putting them back into the streets, which is what we want to see. Item number eight looks at your levy rates. And here, the last four years, prior to four years have been very consistent, but we see this year a decrease in the tax asking for the general fund. So the overall levy is less than what it has been historically. Number nine looks at how depreciated your capital assets are. Once that falls below about thirty-five percent of original cost when you take depreciation into account, it tells us we may have some significant need for capital replacement in the near future. And you can see that for your governmental funds, we are now at about thirty percent, just shy of thirty-one percent. So we're a little bit below that thirty-five percent benchmark. And it just says, hey, we may have a need for some cash flow going back into governmental capital assets in the near term. You can see your utility side is at forty percent. So it's still ahead of that, but something we want to watch for. It's something that I know you're always taking into account as you're looking at your utility fund cash reserves because we know how expensive it is when we have to replace some of those systems. On number eleven, we're looking at debt coverage. And so here, anything above one and a half times is good. You can see that both for your water and sewer, which had the outstanding debt issues, you guys are in, in good capacity in that. You're at three point five and two point six. So you exceed that one point five benchmark. And then finally, the last item on this page looks at just an estimated recommended number for solid cash reserves. And what that does is takes into account how much you're spending on the general side of things. So for operating, how much we recommend in cash reserves and, and under our formula that we use, that's about eleven point two million. And then it also looks back to number nine and says, hey, are we below that thirty-five percent benchmark for net depreciable capital assets? And if so, let's figure out what we may need for capital replacement. Again, this is just a formula. We know some of that stuff may be finance, but just in our general terms, that would say we need about twenty-six million for upcoming capital projects. And so we can see that for the governmental side, you're at about twelve million. So you're below what we would recommend for cash reserves. But again, as you look back historically, you guys have built that up nicely to cover the operating needs, but we need to continue to work on that to continue planning for future capital replacements. On the business-type side of things, on utilities, you can see that our formula comes out to about twenty-eight point five million recommended, and you guys are right there. You're a little over thirty million on the utility side, so you have some solid cash reserves there. I would say just here, continuing to work on the governmental side, as you have over the last several years, just continue to build those for future capital needs. Now, before I get into our audit report itself, I'm going to pause there and see, does anyone have any questions on any of the ratios or any of the comments that I've made just now?
I have a quick one, Marcy. On number nine, governmental activities, is that our percentage reduced by leased equipment? If we have leased equipment that are, it doesn't depreciate quite the same way as a, as a capital purchase. So is that being reduced a little bit or am I off-base on that?
Yeah, I'm having a little trouble hearing that question. Is it close to a mic being able to?
Sorry, I was speaking in the microphone. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Question is on number nine, governmental activities. Do we have, is the percentage reduced when we have leased equipment? Leased equipment?
The leased equipment, if it is not a financing lease, the financing lease would be included in here because those assets are picked up and depreciated. If it's just a short-term operating lease, that equipment is not in here. The majority of your stuff is financed. I've read through U S Bank quite often, so that is included in here when you purchase that equipment. That's considered a purchase under financing, lease purchase.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Marcy, if I could, I think you skipped ten for the operating income. Could you hit, go over that real quick?
Yeah, operating income. So in the financial statements for the utility fund, you've got your utility revenues and then the direct operating expenses. So operating income is the, the income minus the expenses that comes out to that. It is before things like interest, income, interest expense, gains or losses on disposal. But it's just the, the net operating income for the utilities divided by the total income or sales for the utilities. And that target is always fifteen percent, just as a general rule. And thank you for pointing that out because I did skip over that one. I realize now that you asked that question, Wayne. So, thank you. But yes, we always want that to be targeting fifteen percent. And that's really to make sure that we're building in enough cash and, and positive cash flow to not only operate the system, but to build for future capital replacement. You can see for water and sewer, you're there. You've been there the last several years. The electric continues to be about half of that number. So just something to watch for to make sure that when the time comes, we've got the dollars there in the electric fund to replace that capital and, and continue operating the system. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Other questions on this so far? Marcy, looks like you can continue.
Okay, perfect. I'm going to get into the bound audit report itself at this point. I have a couple of highlights as we go. So we already talked about the audit opinion as we were going through there. As we get to page five, the next several pages is the management discussion and analysis. This is where we put in narrative form a little what happened during the last fiscal year. It's just It's just a good place to read if, if you're not into looking at financial statements and interpreting what they're saying. It's just a little bit nicer spot to go to for some narrative, um, interpretation on the financial statements. It's also the only site where you can see comparative information on that. And so on page eight of that financial statement, you can see we've got comparative information between, um, the, basically balance sheet. So we've got assets, liabilities, and net position compared to the prior year. So here you can see your total assets were up, your total liabilities were also up, but not as likely as the asset. So overall, the equity increased, um, positively as well. On page nine, we've got your revenue and expenses for the governmental funds. So again, these are all of your governmental funds that excludes the utilities on this page. But here, if you look at that second table, what we see is you guys' total revenue came in at about 47 million compared to 43 million the year before. And there's three primary line items where we see differences. The capital grants, the third line there, 6.4 million, this was a big year for capital grants coming in. There was a lot in the way of, um, the SRF money coming in, the COVID dollars continuing to roll through, through that, those ARCA funds. Also, your sales tax, as you look at that, as I mentioned, you guys are at the 2%. And you can see significant increase in sales tax from the prior year, 16.2 versus 11.9 million. And did another change going the opposite way down towards the bottom, the gain loss on sale of assets or disposal of assets. What this is, a year ago, um, some of the warrants that were issued were actually carrying in construction in progress on the governmental side, but they were for some water portion of the project, and that got moved over to the water fund this year. So whether you want to consider that more of a transfer to the water fund than a loss, that's what it was. It was moving it out of the governmental side of things. And then finally, that last transfer that you see there reflects dollars that flowed from the governmental funds across to the utilities. We'll see those as we get into the governmental fund financial statements. On page 10, same information for the utility fund. And so here, if we look at that second table, we can see that for the revenue side of things, again, 2 billion in grants compared to none the year before. That reflected your, um, industrial project for the sewer system. And then also you can see the transfers in, the opposite of what we saw on the governmental side as those dollars flowed into the utility fund. The bottom of page 11 shows some of the significant capital activity during this last fiscal year. That continues on to page 12, so you guys did invest a lot of dollars backing through capital assets on both the governmental and business type side of things. And we can see that reflected in the table on page 12. If you look at the totals there, the first column, 67 million, compare that to the 2023 governmental column of 54 million. So you can see a significant increase in net capital assets for the governmental. Same thing is true on the business type, 55.8 million versus 50.8 million the year before. So both reflected after depreciation even, a significant increase in your capital assets. The next page, page 13 shows debt. And here we see, um, your governmental debt just slightly up. You guys did issue some few financing agreements for the leased purpose equipment, and you continued to pay down these scheduled payments on your bonds. Meanwhile, for the business type side of things, continued to pay down the scheduled bond, so the, the business type debt decreased. Overall, your total debt decreased about 1.1 million compared to the prior year. And then some factors varying on next year, the bullet points there, so it's the center of the page. The last three bullet points show some large construction commitments or contractual commitments that were in place that are expected for this next fiscal year. So just some information that will bear on next year's, um, this first month and cash flow needs. Page 14 gets into the main body of the financial statements. You see the governmental and business type assets and liability reflected there. If you flip to page 15, we see that unique governmental view where we look at all the expenses by governmental and business type broken down by function. And then any direct revenue sources, so if you guys have charges for services that cover any of those expenses, they're shown in column two. If you receive operating grants or contributions or capital grants and contributions, those are shown in column three and four. And it brings you over to your net costs that have to be covered just by other revenue sources. And so for the city, your governmental cost, net of direct revenue are about 22.4 million. And that, if you drop to the bottom of the page, is what your property tax of 7.4 million, your sale tax of 16.2 million, your state allocations of 4 million, those are the four primary sources of revenue that help cover those expenses that you not have access to. On page 16, we get into your governmental funds, general fund report being the first column. And what you see there, the last line of net position down under the equity section or the fund balance, 12.4 million of unassigned fund balance. And those of you that have, have heard me for a few years know that's a number that you guys have done a nice job of getting built back up. That was very low five years ago, and you guys have done a nice job of focusing on that and building some of those unassigned reserves up. The second column shows your assessment fund. And here you can see under the liabilities, there was about 18.6 million of warrants payable outstanding at September 30th of last year. Now, since that point, you may have already issued some debt, but that fund is showing a negative fund balance because really it's all sitting up there in warrants payable. When that debt is issued, that will reflect through, clean up that debt and also offset, uh, the negative fund balance. Your ARCA fund showed still 3. almost 7 million of cash at the end of the year. Uh, there was 1.6 million of that that was due across the electric fund. You guys had identified some expenses in the utilities that had utilized ARCA funds. The cash just had not been transferred. So although there was 3. almost 7 million of cash, 1.5 million was due to electric. And so your fund balance, your unspent restricted funds were 2.1 million at the end of last year. Debt service is shown, and then also the other governmental funds are 16 smaller funds that all get rolled up back on page 74. So those are all what they consider non-major or smaller funds. They have various restricted and assigned purposes, but they get rolled up back there. From here, let's move to page 18 where we have the revenue and expenses for all of those major funds. And you can see the third line from the bottom, the general fund's revenue exceeded expenses this year by about 3.1 million. So that is reflecting as you guys are building up that general fund, that's what it took to get there. We needed revenues and excess of expenses in order to build that unassigned fund balance that you built up. You can see the assessment fund meanwhile, we had expenditures that went out, um, and also some transfers out reflecting that capital that got moved across to the water fund. The ARCA fund you can see there, and then again, in the other governmental funds, that's ruled up on page 75, so you can see the detail of those. Your utilities are shown on page 20, the assets and liabilities as well as net positions. Let's look at page 21 where we see the revenues and expenses for the utility fund. And right there in the center of the page, we've got the operating income loss. And that again is that target of 15% that we talked about with ratio number 10 that we were going through. Okay? This year, the new column for the utility fund is the industrial wastewater treatment fund. And you can see here, it shows some grant proceeds coming in to that fund, so there is about 2 million sitting in there at the end of the year. Okay, I'm gonna skip through the cash flow statement, let's jump back to the footnote. We're gonna skip a lot of the accounting policy pages and move you back to page 45.
Uh, Marcy, I have a question, I have a question for you. Uh, back on page nine, uh, it says, uh, property taxes. It appears that we have a reduction in property taxes, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, that reflected a slight decrease in the property tax. Um, now that would be, um, what was collected sometime from year to year, depending upon when people pay their tax. They could be a little bit off on that timing, but yeah, that does reflect a, a decrease year to year of about, what, 8,000?
Would, would you expect it to go down with the growth that we're experiencing in our town?
Well, if you guys, um, have any questions, um, let's see here. Trying to think. It's been a while since we did the audit, so I don't have that answer right at hand, um, with what was reflecting in there. But no, your tax levy, your tax levy was very consistent. Keep in mind, some of those dollars are going through TIP proceeds right now. So some of your development projects are not showing in property tax right now, but they're showing in TIP proceeds, which is down a few lines, 818 versus 554 the year before. And I'm trying to think what else was impacting the property tax. But the levy was pretty consistent between 23 and 24 for you guys.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe just a slight decrease, it was like eight, or 29.84 versus 29.85 the year before.
We did reduce our asking, our dollar asking amount, just about that $80,000 out here.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, on page 45, we've got, um, just a break, breakdown of the camp. And so you guys had total of 67.7 million in cash at the end of the year. And then also had some restricted investments, which was reflected in the paragraph below, just shy of 3.6 million. Now, of that, almost 70 million complete cash and investments, if you flip the page, on page 46, it indicates that about 24.8 million of that had some restricted purpose. And for the governmental fund, you can see what those various restricted purposes are, federal programs, debt service, capital projects, et cetera. And then also for the business side, you can see some of it's restricted for cat, or for debt service, and then some of it's restricted for your customer deposit. But always important to note that, you know, you have a certain amount of cash, but there are some restrictions, um, that tie some of those dollars up. Okay, on page 47, we've got the capital assets. Reflects the net additions, if you look at that additions column, of an increase of almost 15 million. So your reinvestment in capital assets exceeded depreciation by about 15 million for the governmental side of things. And then if you flip back to page 49, for the utility side, it exceeded it by about 5 million. So again, both of those reflected almost $20 million dollar increase between governmental and business type in your capital assets this year. On page 15, we see your long-term debt. And as I mentioned earlier, the new debt or financing agreements, you can see that 2.3 million reflected in the additions column. And then everything else with this scheduled principal payments reflected in the deduction payment, or deduction column, I should say. And so as we jump back a few more pages, page 55 is a nice summary of all of the outstanding debt. So you can see over the next five years, and then in five-year increments after that, how much principal and interest is going to be required, how much cash flow is going to be needed to service, um, that principal and interest, uh, debt service.
Marcy, if, if I may, that goes back then to your other report on number five where it talked about our outstanding debt, and we're at less than 1%, and you said excellent, is anywhere less than 3%, correct?
Yeah, you're at, you're at less than 1% of, of GO of debt valuation, of valuation. And so, yes, below 3% gives you excellent capacity to service that debt, that's exactly right. Okay, um, page six shows your registered warrants. And as I mentioned, those warrants grew up to about 18.6 million at the end of the year. You can see you started at about 9.6. You issued warrants, you paid off the warrants, but they basically almost doubled during that time period. Okay? Um, jumping on a little bit further, we get into some pension footnotes, I'm gonna go through those in detail. Let's go back to page 61. This is a nice summary of where, which financial institutions that 67.7 million dollars were held. So you're aware of, of which institutions are involved there. And then page 62 is a nice summary of the outstanding construction commitments that were in place at the end of the year. You can see those total just shy of $9 million if you look at that third column of obligation pending. So you can see the various projects that were in process, as well as the expected completion on those projects, um, that were going at that point. Got a few more things, I'm gonna jump through the interlocal agreements and go back to page 67, where your notes receivable are detailed out. So your North Platte Quality Growth Fund had several notes here in place. Many of them are forgivable, if certain terms are met, and so that's listed out there in the description. Those notes, at least the ones that had not yet been forgiven, total 3.2 million as of the end of the year. There was also a note, um, through, through the Northwest Economic Development Fund, Northwestern Economic Development Fund, of 500,000. And that was also a forgivable note if certain terms are met. Okay? Um, page 69, page two, TIP agreements. And so as I mentioned earlier, you guys approved 818,000 of TIP proceeds. This shows the various projects, as well as the date of the TIP agreement in comparison to that 15-year time period. These usually run the 15 years, or if the TIP debt is paid off before that, they'll go back on the tax rule at that point. From here, let's jump back a little further, we've got some budget through the backboard, you guys were in compliance with all of the budgetary requirements. Page 74 is that detail of those smaller funds. So you can see the assets and liabilities as well as the fund balance for those non-major, 16 non-major funds. And the same thing on page 75 for the revenue and the expenses for those various smaller, uh, funds. The leviness history is shown on page 76, so you can just get a feel of the various levies and how that trended over time. And then finally, on page 77, we have your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So because the city had more than 750,000 dollars of expenses of federal awards, we worked up to the additional single audit procedures as part of this year's audit. The first program up there, this issue through the Department of Treasury, which was basically the ARCA funding, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, those totaled a little over $4 million. They came directly from the feds, they also were passed through the Department of Health and Human Services and EEB. So all three of those were the same federal program, and that's what we tested as the major program. All of the testing came out well, the controls and the compliance with the requirements, um, all were satisfactory, and we did not have any comments regarding those major programs. Page 79 and 80 are internal control and compliance reports for the city as a whole. And on page 80, we do have one finding that we reference, which is referenced as 2024 death 001. And I'll point that out to you, but it'll be familiar to those of you that have heard me before. But on page 85, we list that finding, and it simply, you know, you're a large entity, but there's still a concentration of, of responsibilities within a limited number of people. So we do always remind you as council, there is a limited number of people that, that have the authority to handle things. And so we want to remind you guys of that segregation of duty, just as you're reviewing financials, just to make sure that you're, uh, monitoring things, that you're comfortable, that you're getting your questions answered, just to help with that segregation issue. Um, we did have another finding on page 86 from the prior year. And this schedule, this is the summary schedule of prior audit findings. The one relates to significant deficiencies, so it says the same thing, we'll continue to monitor and, and provide oversight of transactions. The second one though, you guys did address, and that was in regard to the payroll accounting, and just making sure that processes had been implemented to help with reinsurance. and just making sure that processes had been implemented to help with reinsurance as well as payroll liabilities, payroll tax deposits. And we felt that, that those procedures were, um, put in place, so that's what that comment reflects. Page eighty-seven reflects the same recording on said issues. There was also a letter of comment that needed to be, I'm just gonna briefly talk about. Um, and in that letter, we revised the audit adjustments that we proposed. There were seven audit adjustments which decreased the fund balances of the governmental funds by about eleven point three million. The big chunk of that was just moving the warrants payable over to a liability, out of revenue over to the warrant payable liability. Um, also adjusting the self-insurance fund and the, the reinsurance was about one point four million, um, on that. For the gov, for the, uh, business type side of things, there were six adjustments. They increased the net position by about three point seven million. The bigger chunk of that, um, capital assets were increased as well as the transfer revenue being increased when that water construction in progress was moved across from the assessment fund that I mentioned earlier when we talked about the governmental fund. And then also recording the amount that was due from the ARCA fund across, um, to the electric fund, to move that grant revenue and record those transfers. Recommendations on the next page, you can see there, um, just making sure that we'll get it to you now, I'm gonna get a little bottom. Talking a little bit too much. You guys probably agree with that, right? All right. The quality growth fund has some forgivable loans. And so it's important that we have the system in place to track the requirements for compliance and for forgiveness. So we just want to make sure that as those loans get issued, that that's a step that we're following up on. And then also wanting to make sure that those terms for forgiveness do not get so complex that it requires too much, um, tracking and administrative effort. So for example, one of the loans that was issued during this past year had a forgivable requirement that it was reduced by twenty-five percent of sales tax generated by the tenants and twenty-five percent of payroll generated by the tenants during those three years. So it just gets into a lot of calculations. And so we just want, want to think about that as those loans are getting issued, that it's kind of something that, yes, it's measurable, but that it doesn't become overly burdensome to gather that data. Um, so just want to be conscious of that as those loans are getting issued in the future. There was one quality growth loan that was supposed to begin repayments in November of twenty-three. Those repayments did not get started through November of twenty-four. So just wanting to follow up and make sure that that, um, in, that, that business became compliant with those terms. We've talked in the past about wanting to get the health insurance revenues and expenses recorded on the general ledger. This has always been, um, a year-end audit adjustment for the last several years, but it just encourages them to continue to work towards recording that in Fund Seventy-Eight so they can monitor it throughout the course of the year. We also always recommend, you know, we have an internal audit pro, uh, department. Um, just continuing to add to the procedures, rotate those around. Think about how that can be used to, um, enhance the monitoring of your organization. So continuing to expand that, um, as you can. Wanting to make sure that we do not put expenses to revenue accounts. One of the grants that we were looking at had been netted against the grant revenue. Always important for budgetary, um, integrity to make sure that the expenditures get posted to expenditure accounts. That was a rather small incident, but just a reminder that that's the way we want to record that. Also wanting to make sure that the department heads receive regular internal financial statements. I know that was a goal they were working towards getting back into that process. And just to provide good information to your department heads so they know where they're at, where they're at compared to budget, and can utilize those to help them manage those departments as well. Um, wanting to continue to track that health insurance receivable and make sure that we stay on top of that so we understand what stop-loss claims may be coming into the city or may be due to the city. What we've experienced with some of our municipalities over the last couple of years, probably with increased frequency, is, um, maybe a lot more delay in collecting that stop-loss when a claim does go up and over at maximum coverage. And so just wanting to make sure that, that all of our clients are really aware of that and staying on top of that if they do have those larger health claims, to make sure the reinsurer is getting them paid timely. Um, and then a couple of other items, capital assets. We did notice, um, several transactions that shouldn't have been capitalized. You meant to do your own depreciation schedules in-house. And so we ran into some, um, capital assets that just had not gotten picked up out of your accounting software throughout the course of the year. So making sure the process is in place, that those assets do not get missed. So your depreciation schedules are up to date before the point of the audit. And then finally, for your non-public safety retirement, there are about fifty, or year-end, there were about fifty-five thousand of forfeiture that could be used to reduce future expense. So just wanted to, uh, include that information, so if you guys are doing your planning for those benefits, keep that in mind. So with that, I'm gonna turn it back to you guys. Um, we're still at five thirteen, so we've got about ten minutes if you have any questions.
Marcy, can you remind me, in the revenue section of the general fund, the payment in lieu of taxes of about two point two million dollars? What all that consists of?
Yeah, the payment in lieu of taxes would be anyone that you guys, I'm trying to think, if you guys, if that's just an internal payment um, from your electric and water. Um, in some communities, there are outside utilities that also kick into that. Dawn, can you refresh my memory? Is that certainly in charge?
Yes, Marcy, you're exactly right. It would come, uh, as a transfer from water and electric.
Uh, since Marcy brought it up, and, and if I'm recalling correctly on our, our health insurance conversations this last go-around, we've actually received more payments from our stop-loss than we've actually paid out. Do, have we had any issues receiving those payments, Dawn?
No, um, Councilman Garrick, and that, that is a great point. That is an area that we are continuing to try to enhance internally. We've had a fairly significant amount of turnover in that department. So that is one thing that Megan and Maddie and I have really been focused on creating some, um, new, better, um, monitoring, uh, capabilities there. Um, so yes, that is one of our big goals, um, to get that all put in place by, through this year.
Got you. Oh, I assumed there wasn't a problem, but she brought it up, so I thought I'd better ask.
No, and we have not identified anything, um, but we do want to implement those controls to continually monitor moving forward.
Excellent.
Anyone have any other questions? Well, Marcy, it appears you've answered all our questions for the moment.
Okay, well, that's great, and with a few minutes to spare, so thank you so much. And as always, if there are other issues that come up throughout the course of the year, please just reach out, and we're happy to help.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna take a moment to thank Dawn, her team, and Lane for monitoring the budget and doing such a good job of keeping us on track. And I think we're in pretty good shape this year, and it should be another exciting year in twenty twenty-five. Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Yep, bye-bye.
Bye.
As this meeting has reached the end of its agenda, it is now over. We will reconvene as a city council at five-thirty as usual. Thank you, everyone.